Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, March 28th, 2023 Business Meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum. Everyone is present this evening. At this time, I'd like to invite forward Dr. Pamela Braff, who is our Climate Program Manager, to give us an update on a pretty exciting program to help decarbonize our grid.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Good evening, members of council. I'm really excited to officially announce the launch of our Energize Olympia campaign, which we have been working on for a little over a year now. So Energize Olympia, this is a ductless heat pump group purchase campaign that's being designed and supported and implemented by a partnership between the City of Olympia Habitat for Humanity and Spark Northwest. And just a quick update, what's a heat pump? Sometimes we need a reminder. Heat pumps are kind of like these magical boxes that offer energy efficient heating and cooling. They're like an alternative to your furnace or your air conditioner. They reduce energy consumption, they reduce greenhouse gas emissions, they provide heating in the winter, cooling in the summer, kind of all around magical box. So this heat pump group purchase campaign offers a number of benefits to members of our community. There will be installation discounts, some provided by our installer and some provided by the city. So we just received responses to our RFP for an installer who is going to be providing services as a part of this campaign. We're reviewing those right now. And so the installer will be providing a group purchase discount. We don't exactly know what that will be yet, but we'll know that soon. And then the city is also providing an additional upfront discount of $800 at the time of sale for each installation as a part of this campaign for the first 50 participants. We also have fully subsidized installations for income qualified participants, and the funding for that is being provided by Community Development Block Grant Funds, as well as a grant from the Community Energy Efficiency Program. We're also going to be providing connections to financial resources, coordinating incentives for participants, so helping to make sure folks are accessing benefits from the utility state and other incentives that are available. We're providing simplified installer selection, vetting installers ahead of time, so that participants don't have to do that. We'll handhold customers through the process from getting a site assessment to a quote through installation and quality assurance along the way. And then it'll be up to participants in the campaign to see if they want to actually go forward and install a heat pump. So this is the good stuff. How to learn more, how to participate? We have a website. You can visit olympiawa.gov/energize. And if you go to the website, you'll find two things, a list of FAQ, frequently asked questions, as well as a place to sign up for more information. So if you sign up there, that'll get you on the list to find out as more information is available about the campaign. In the next couple of weeks, we'll be scheduling some community workshops. Those will be the first. That is how you participate in this campaign. You attend a community workshop, you learn a little bit about heat pumps, you meet our installer, you learn about the process. And from there, we can connect interested folks to the installer to go through the process of the campaign. And those workshops are expected to start in May. And that is all I have. I'll put the website up again real quick, real big for folks can see, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Any question? Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Dr. Braff. This is really exciting. I also wanted to suggest that maybe when we promote this program, we could also promote that if someone is replacing a wood stove in the process, they could obtain the grant funds from the Olympic Region Clean Air Agency at the same time in the same project.
Yes, we're planning on including those incentives as a part of the whole kind of the workshop. So when you show up, you'll learn about those incentives too.
Perfect. Thank you so much for getting this going. Appreciate it.
Wonderful. Councilmember Partially?
Did I hear you've selected or you're accepting RFPs for the installer?
The RFP just closed, so we received some responses to that, and staff are reviewing those now. We'll be selecting an installer in the next couple of weeks.
This is fantastic. Just thank you.
Thank you. It's been a long road. I mean, you've only been here a few years, and you've made great strides. But this, I know, was something really top of your list, so I'm glad we're to this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. On tonight's agenda, we have two special recognitions. And the first one is item 2A, and that is a proclamation recognizing Transgender Day of Visibility. And we have a shared reading for the proclamation, and so I believe I'm going to my right to start?
Whereas, Transgender Day of Visibility was founded in 2009 by transgender activist Rachel Crandall, the Executive Director of Transgender Michigan, to acknowledge and honor the successes achieved by transgender people, and?
Whereas, the City of Olympia celebrates the significant contributions transgender, gender nonconforming, and non-binary people make to Olympia, and affirms that they are vital members of our community, and?
Whereas, Transgender Day of Visibility provides a forum for transgender communities and allies to raise awareness of the need for visible support and resources for transgender, non-binary, and gender nonconforming people, and awareness of the persistent transphobic prejudice that permeates our society, and?
Whereas, transgender, gender nonconforming, and non-binary community members are business owners, artists, educators, activists, advocates, family members, and friends who deserve to live free from discrimination and harassment of any form, and?
Whereas, the City of Olympia honors the transgender, gender nonconforming, and non-binary people of Olympia for their resilience and activism within our community, and acknowledges that work still needs to be done to address anti-transgender violence, particularly at this time when transgender rights and existence is being challenged, and?
Whereas, the City of Olympia recognizes that our transgender and gender diverse community members deserve a safe place, not just to survive, but to live and thrive. And whereas, a Transgender Day of Visibility open mic event for transgender performers is being organized by the OLE Trans fam and Capital City Pride on Friday, March 31st at 8:00 PM at the Cryptopia Bar, and?
Now therefore be it resolved, the City of Olympia does hereby proclaim March 31st, 2023, as Transgender Day of Visibility, and urges all residents to respect and honor the right of our transgender and gender diverse community members to live openly in an authentic and accurate representation of who they are, free from violence, harassment, and discrimination. Signed in the City of Olympia, Washington, this 20th day of March, 2023, Olympia City Council Cheryl Selby, Mayor.
And I'd like to invite forward Toby Hillmeyer, who is our Diversity Equity Inclusion Program Manager for the city. And I've got some signed proclamations for you, Toby, too, to disperse.
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. I want to say that this proclamation was created with support from OLE Trans fam. They are a community group for mutual aid and support amongst trans community, and they help arrange for housing, job-seeking support, they foster community connections, support people through detox, provide psych education on trauma, and create joy-centered events. And with that, we have some people from OLE Trans fam who would like to have a little something to say.
Everyone's gathered? All right. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the mayor, to the council, for the City of Olympia, for giving us this moment to talk. I'm sure there's been a lot of moments where we, as trans people, haven't been able to talk, and having this forum is just, it's very touching. We're all here have a little bit of stuff we've wanted to say, and well, I'm going to get started on that now. So I am Kalu, I am Sable, I am Venus, I am Romani, I am Tino. I'm immigrant, I'm obviously disabled, I'm a mother, and I am trans. I've walked through the halls of rich people's homes, I've walked through the slums of the poor, I've walked through brothels, through morgues, through hospitals, through squats. I've been to the camps where they gassed my ancestors, where I walked shoulder to shoulder with the ghosts of the people who should have, would have, could have loved me, but weren't given that chance. I've cried a thousand tears, spit blood from gritted busted teeth, had my bones broken and my heart shattered, been abandoned. And all these things I say, not to give anyone bad feelings, not to make people sad or angry. I say them because I've lived them, and I have lived, I have survived, and I did that with, I did not do that alone. I'm going to use the words of a young man who spoke from his heart. One of the brightest minds of a generation's murdered when he was just 21, 54 years ago this coming December. He ran a mutual aid organization, not beyond what we currently run, and his name was Fred Hampton. He told us that someday people were going to tell us that we fight fire best with fire. And he said, "And we say that you don't fight fire with fire, you fight fire with water." Fred said, "We don't fight racism with racism, we don't fight classism with classism, we don't fight homophobia with homophobia." He said, "We say that you fight bigotry, not with bigotry, but with solidarity." I would not be alive to this day if it had just been me. I've relied my whole life on the help of my black brothers, Asian sisters, Latin siblings, with my family of all origins, colors, beliefs. They stood with me, and I stand with them now. Power anywhere there's people. Power anywhere there's people.
My name is Deirdre Lynn Joy Kramer. I'm a trans woman, she, her, they, them pronouns. I'm also a proud Olympian, born right here at St. Peter's Hospital, grew up on my grandparents' farm off 26th Street. I work as an HVAC tech for the Olympia School District, maintaining the schools in the city that raised me. And after living here for 38 years, I finally transitioned. I lost a lot, I felt forgotten, unseen and invisible. I decided to reach out in search of those like me, those going through what I was going through, especially seeking out those that have already gone through it, other trans folks that could sit with me, so I wasn't going through it alone. When someone does come out, to have a safe, secure space with others that feels built in abundance and not scarcity, that can mean everything. But I was surprised to not only find a community, not to find a community of trans folks helping others in Olympia. What I found was small groups of us that knew of others, some amazing LGBTQ plus communities, but nothing in the way of trans helping trans. And much of that was due to the pandemic. So, and true to my nature, I decided to build one. When I found others wanting to do the same, and last year, the OLE Trans fam started, and we simply offered to sit with others as they go through the struggles we face for merely existing as trans people. So in true to my nature, or sorry, naturally, I found more like me looking for a community like this. So I shared my idea, we built one together, a community of trans folks, not just helping each other, but to thrive as we do it. That idea became a wonderful reality, shared by more than 100 of us now. Olympia is a bastion of a dense population of trans folks seeking sanctuary from a majority of a country and a world that it wants to best ignore us and at worst eradicate us, especially BIPOC trans folk and unbelievably the children. Trans communities with positive intentions must exist, because the truth is, we've always been here from the beginning. A millennia ago, our transcestors first lit the torch of their valid human existence through their own bravery, through their own visibility. That torch has been passed down through generations of incredible trans folk that refuse to live out a lie and fear. And now that flame has made it to us, to the generations that stand before you now, with their own bravery, asking for equality. We at OLE Trans fam fully intend to nurture that flame, help grow it stronger to burn hotter, brighter, and more beautiful than ever before, so that one day, we can pass it to the next generations, making it easier for them to be seen as they add their own fuel to it. We can do this by celebrating our trans culture together with the communities we build today. I not only ask for everyone in this city, country, and world to respect our existence by helping us be seen, accepted, respected, and celebrated, but also for all their trans folk to see ourselves. See the other trans folk around you. Validate ourselves through coming together, forming healthy, fun, healing, positive communities. Accept each other, cultivate our own cultures, celebrate our transcestors' gift as a family, honor ourselves and the torch we now carry, so that one day, no one will have to go through this alone.
My name is Josie Willis Ford. Every day when we wake up, we build our social roles for the day, forming castles from the sands of sleep. Do we cobble up today's castle using the rigid blueprint that was pushed onto us since we were children? Or do we build the shapes that we see in our dreams? As trans people, we empower ourselves to write our own story. We listen to the brave voice inside of our hearts that starts as a whisper and grows to a roar, that says it's okay to be who we are. It's beautiful to be who we are. It's essential to be who we are. Because to be something else for somebody else is to choose oblivion. We know this well. We band together to write our stories, to lift each other up, to tell each other that our stories matter. There's no time to waste, because by the time we pick up our own pens, so much damage has already been done to us by the world outside. We curate the best environment we can that allows us to heal ourselves. With enough nurturing, we become strong enough to step out into the world, hearts forward as our whole selves. Those who truly see us can see how beautiful we are. The world needs more opening, more safety, more harmony. Harmony is not conformity. Harmony is collective emotional honesty. Harmony is celebrating with love the fact that our community is greater than the sum of each individual. Harmony is a deep resilient strength. So we ask you to see us, to hear us when we say, "This is me. This is who I was all along. I'm not the expectations that were put on to me, or what society thinks I'm supposed to be. I am a creation of self-love, and I don't have to do this alone anymore." Thank you for hearing us.
My name is Lilith Aurora Delo. I am a 41-year-old trans woman. My pronouns are she, her, and it. As a middle-aged, middle-class trans woman, I want to acknowledge that I'm speaking from a position of privilege. I've lived in Olympia for the last year, and before that, I lived in Graves Harbor, Washington. I may sound a bit raspy or quiet today, as I'm recovering from vocal surgery, and I've only been able to speak with my new voice for the last week. Prior to that, I wasn't able to talk for 14 days, and the silence gave me time to reflect. As trans people, we give up so much of ourselves, or our authentic selves, transition, sorry. As trans people, we give up so much to be our authentic selves. Transitioning comes with loss, though it is different for each of us. This can include a loss of friends, family, career, home, and community. It can cost us personal and financial security. And for too many of my trans brothers, sisters, and siblings, it eventually costs them their lives. Over the last few years, I've listened to countless transition stories, and an almost universal experience early on is fear. Fear of loss, of isolation, of violence. And for many of us, it's this fear that costs us our voice. We silence ourselves, make ourselves small for fear of reprisal, become less of who we are in order to blend in. Because I didn't want to make the people around me uncomfortable, didn't want to put myself at risk, I was one of those who silenced their voice. I tried to force myself into the gender binary, only to eventually find out that I am among the 2% of people who are intersex. My existence shows that both sex and gender exist on a spectrum, with countless variations in between male and female. The act of transitioning is ultimately one of finding our place on, for some, outside of that spectrum, and in doing so, living truly to our authentic selves. To my trans siblings, wherever you are on your journey, I want to say that I am so proud of you for having the courage to be true to yourself. I see you. You are valid. And when you are ready to stand up and find your voice, you will not be alone. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Dakota. I'm a 21-year-old queer trans man. I apologize in advance for any vocal cracks. Consider it an inside look into the life of a trans man. I have written the following poem to express how I feel about the world's current situation. History is written by the winners. Maybe that's why they can't see ours. They attempt to erase us from history, no longer whisper. We speak up, get loud, we are ready to fight injustice. The deaths of trans teens don't scare them, they think we spread like a virus. Funny, because they can't seem to care about the real one. We are a scapegoat for the problems they can see but can't admit to, they're convinced to, that it's hard to explain transness to children. But when my mom told my five-year-old nephew, "Dakota is a boy now," he responded simply, "Okay." Tell me which is harder, that conversation or telling a child why their trans teachers, classmates, family, and friends aren't there anymore, and why you did nothing to stop it. They call transness an epidemic. I agree. I see an epidemic of people to love who they truly are, and how elegant is that? Just because we don't fit into a neat little box, we are demonized, villainized, and worse. While they attempt to eradicate, erase us from the history books, remember that they can't. We are all around, we'll stay in town. We've been run underground, but now we stand our ground. It's time to get up in the now and shout. It's time to write ourselves back into history, because they can't erase us, but we don't have to stand down and watch as they try to make us.
Is it time for us to make, awesome, thank you, thank you, thank you? I just want to celebrate your courage, everyone here in this room, for being here tonight. And I hope you know that this was taped. And as I was listening to all of your words, I was thinking about what a gift you have given to many others that are thinking about where they fit in this world, and that there's a place for them, and that thank God Olympia is one of those places. So thank you, and feel free, you can make it, you can edit the tape of this conversation. It can be a resource across the world. Thank you. I'll go to Councilmember Partially.
I think the mayor said it all. As I was listening to each and every one of you, you moved me. Your words are powerful. They're poetry. I hope you publish them somewhere, because, and then you get a chance to read them, because they stabbed me in the heart and made me pause. And I echo what the mayor said. I'm very proud of Olympia. We will stand with you. This needs to be a place of safety for everyone.
Councilmember Payne, followed by Mayor Potem Gilman.
Yes, good evening, everyone. As the mayor said, thank you so much for your courage coming here tonight and sharing your words with us. I'm looking at the beautiful rainbow of people that are in this room right now. There's very few meetings where we have a packed house, and I'm looking at all the diverse faces, the different shapes and sizes and colors, the different hair lengths. And it's just something that I think we take for granted. There are places right now in this country that are, as you said, vilifying and demonizing trans people. We know that legislation that affects drag performers is going to have an impact on the trans community, for example. And sometimes there's legislation that directly attacks our trans siblings. And it just has me thinking about the fact that we cannot take for granted, you know, where we live. We can think that this is safe for us, you know, here in Olympia, Washington. But if you watch around the country, it takes simply one election cycle for somebody's civil rights to be on the chopping block, and for your government to come after you. And that's something that we should all, really, really, it should scare all of us, because when they come for one of us, they come for all of us, right? I just admire your bravery and your courage to come here, even in a place that's presumably safe, to bring yourselves here and speak to us, to out yourselves, so to speak, so that others can see you, as the mayor said. So tremendous amount of respect for you for that, and thank you for your words. I'll just leave you with something, a bumper sticker that I actually saw earlier today that I was thinking quite a bit about, and that is, is that people are using their faith and their religion to sort of, you know, come after various populations in this country. And the bumper sticker said that freedom is the distance between state and church.
Mayor Potem Gilman.
Thank you. Well, I certainly agree with Councilmember Payne that there's serious work for us to do, to keep a safe place and to keep respecting folks. But tonight, I don't know that I can say anything better than Dakota's nephew. Okay. You are okay. You are beloved members of our community. And I'm really glad that you're part of Olympia.
Oh, Councilmember Drone.
That was beautiful. I don't have too much more to add, except that I really love the term "transcestors." I hadn't heard that before, so thank you for sharing with us tonight. I really, really appreciate it, and I think, I think other people do too.
It's been said already, but I loved this. I absolutely loved this. I came in really hurriedly after work today, trying to get all my stuff aligned, make sure things were charged, trying to stuff a fish taco in my face, like, just trying to be on point. And I, and it's just, it's really lovely to see, just like Councilmember Payne had said, this like mosaic of people in the room. I'm like, like, these are people like, that looks like I might actually hang out with, you know? It's like, oh, it's like, this is a different type of workday. And it was just, yeah, it was just really, really lovely, hearing from all of you, and then seeing all of the support here too. And I just, I think it's Josie, yeah. All of your stories and the things that you had to say, amazing. And also, Josie, I just started crying like a baby. I was like, I got dreams, you know? Like, it was just so like, and I think when each of you spoke, there was, and it was so different, every speaker tonight, but you could see the faces like just on the dais and around the room, alike. There was something, I think, that touched everyone in a different way, and it was just so, I think we needed that here and tonight. And then also, did we, Kelly, did we already find our?
Poet laureate?
New poet laureate, or not? Because I think they're in this room.
That's in process.
Oh. Is it a closed process?
Has it, has it, the applications?
Oh.
Applications are due April 17. I was, I had a note, sent email to me, so.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Okay, well, only if you want to, of course. But really, really beautiful stuff. Thank you, Tal.
So because our Arts Director, Stephanie Johnson, couldn't get to a mic in time, there is an application process for our poet laureate that's every two years, and the applications are due April 17. So if anybody's watching this and inspired here, or anyone that's here is inspired to apply, it's on our website. All right. And Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Thank you. Thank you for using your voice and your story to work for our community. Like, it takes a lot to have the stories you have and honestly survive them. And it's a whole nother leap to bring it into this room and use it to make the community a better place. And like, I applaud you. And, like, I applaud you. In fact, I'm hoping that if I rise with you and give you a standing ovation, that my colleagues and the staff will join me. I rise with you.
Have a great evening.
Well, we're onto item.
Mayor Selby?
Yes?
I think we're gonna do a photo.
Oh, the photo, sure. Sorry, yeah.
Can we just go sit in the audience and have it from up here?
Maybe the photographer could stand here?
Can we, can we stand here and then us stand in front of the audience, so the audience is part of it, unless you don't want to be in it?
Yeah, I think it's easier.
Yeah, so it's a great idea.
Everybody in the back stands up, too, and then we can have the whole city in the back.
Everybody's gonna have to squeeze a little closer.
All right, one, two, cheese. And I'll do a couple more. Make sure I got everyone smiling. Oh, yep, there we go. And big smiles. Oh, it looks awesome, you guys. I love it. Thank you.
It's a night of recognition and congratulations and admiration. Item 2B is honoring outgoing members of advisory boards, committees, and commissions. And so I would like to invite forward Kelly Purse-Brossit, who is our strategic coordinator, strategic cord, communications director, lots of words there, to talk about our advisory committee program and where we are and how we're gonna be starting this new tradition of really recognizing, in a more high-profile way, all the service hours that have been committed by this group.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Selby, council members. Great to be before you again. For the record, my name is Kelly Purse-Brossit. I'm the Strategic Communications Director for the city. I'm at the podium tonight because the other things that I do include serving as the executive's liaison to the advisory committees, and in that work, I support the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee and their work with advisory committees, recruiting them, boarding them, interviewing them, working with them. But tonight is really about goodbyes, saying goodbye to those who've served on those bodies. It has always happened, those farewells, in a really informal committee-to-by-committee level. The staff liaisons, who I'm just gonna say are a remarkable group of city employees who, besides their job, support these advisory boards, commissions, and committees. They work together and presented, to develop and presented to the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee, a new, more public, more consistent way to honor the service of these community volunteers. It starts with this moment, an opportunity to recognize those folks by the city council who appoints them at a public meeting. It also involves a certificate of appreciation, which everybody appreciates, because they're appreciative. And for those who have served three full terms, which the council has placed, has decided would be a nine years is a nice, a nice spot for a term limit, for those folks who have done that extensive service and have termed out of their bodies, we have this very cool cup. On it has a logo that says, the city's little logo or slogan, "Working Together to Make a Difference," and on the back it says, "Thank you for your service to the community." So those will go to those folks who are terming out. This evening, we're beginning this tradition formally and publicly acknowledging the service of the community members who depart council-appointed advisory committees. I have the unusual and really cool honor of being in the room when council members interviewed nearly everybody departing tonight. And I like to name them all. They've all been invited to tonight's meeting, and those who could are in attendance. I don't want to miss anyone, so if your name, please give a wave, a shout out, so we know you're there, and I'm gonna start. So first of all, from the Arts Commission, Kathy Murray, who is a long-serving, she's termed out, she's not in the audience today because she is not feeling well, but she had planned to be in attendance. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee has a clutch of folks who are leaving us. Barb Buman, who is, oh, there she is, she's there. Matthew Fitz Fitzgerald, present. John Tallman, he's leaving. He sends his regrets, he's got kiddo stuff tonight, so he couldn't make it. Brittany Younger-Carlson, long-serving chair of the committee, has, and is also terming out. Got a cup for you. Maria Ruth is leaving Prak, and she's chaired that committee through most of her tenure there. She also sends her regrets. Rad Cunningham, are you in the room? There he is. Also, someone who has chaired the Planning Commission, from the UAC, Roger Wilson, I'm not sure if he made it, but he is a long-serving, terming-out member of the committee. And from the newest committee, the Social Justice and Equity Commission, Omar Santana-Gomez has stepped down. He had to leave town because he has a way cool job doing equity work in Spokane. And then Sarah Lloyd had to step down, and Sarah immediately stepped into leadership as a co-chair of that committee. So that is your graduating class. I am going to send it your way, and what I'd like to make sure, before anybody leaves or anything, I'd like to make sure we get a class photo with the council and the members who are here. So I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thanks, Kelly, so much for that. Point of clarification, do you have the certificates to hand out? Because I don't. Okay, so how do you want to hand those out?
This is the first time, so I'm happy to hand them out, or if you would like to, that works as well.
Okay, so, okay, so we'll do, this is obviously, this is fresh new for us, so do you want to make comments now, and then we'll go down and we'll just take the picture and we'll hand out the certificates while we're getting the picture taken?
Okay, that works.
Right. Any? Councilmember Drumm.
I just want to thank everybody who has served on our advisory committees. Your contributions have really, really helped shape the future of our city, and it is, it is something that we're all grateful for. And we always get so many wonderful people who apply. So for those of you who are in the room who are thinking, oh, what are these advisory committees? Think about, you know, if you might want to serve on one of those sometime in the future. But for those who are outgoing right now, thank you so much for your service, and I'm sure that we will be seeing you around still.
Councilmember Gwen, who is also the chair of the Community Livability Committee that does all the interviews.
For everyone that might be viewing in tonight, and for folks that are transitioning off, that are here with us this evening, I'm kind of bummed. I'm like, I'm so excited to be, to be celebrating you all and to have this being our first time, really, I think, recognizing in an organized fashion folks that spend a lot of their times, their weekends, their evening nights, studying up or being in these different advisory boards, commissions, and committees for us, really out of just care for the community. Of course, I think my colleagues would give me the hook if I didn't say that we are the first city to implement a stipend, a small stipend, but a stipend nonetheless for participation. But really, it's out of care and love for the city to help be alongside us in planning it and giving us such great insights as things come across the council dais. There's, yeah, it's just, so, I could go on and on about how much I do appreciate folks' service, and every time we get a little peek at who's transitioning off, because life happened, or they're doing different things now, there's always, you know, there's those names that come across, I'm like, no, no, they give such great service. Rad, you're smiling at me, you were one of them, sir. Yes. Anyway, so really excited that you're all here tonight and to celebrate you, and there are so many opportunities at the city to get involved, and so I, when time allows, I hope that you'll, you'll pursue it again, and also that you'll share your experience as well, if you could, if you haven't done so already, if you do an exit interview and tell us more ways that we can improve the process, that would be appreciated.
Thank you. Councilmember Partially.
I'm not gonna belabor this, but I view the councils and the commissions as the way for our community to speak to us and speak to our policies, to make sure that your voices are heard, and I honor that service. And by the way, the stipend was to show our respect as well for the effort and work you put on behalf of the city. I just want to thank you all, because I know how much work it was, and I appreciate it.
So I think what we'll do is we'll just invite the people that, Kelly, who's Kelly's, the names that Kelly just read off, and we'll just stand up here and get a picture with council for our departing commission members. Come on up and join.
item. So if I could have all the council members back up, I'm so sorry to push things along, but we are, we have a very big agenda ahead of us, and so I really want to get us moving on. We have, normally we'd have public comment at this time, we have nobody signed up for public comment, so we're gonna go right to approval of tonight's consent calendar. Do I have a motion? Somebody?
Second.
Oh, I have several pools. I have item 4K is kind of standing by its own, and then I have items 4C through 4J, which all relate to the new appointments for our advisory committees and commissions. So I am going to have Jacinda, you're gonna have to help me pronounce that last name.
Stelchus.
Stelchus?
And welcome in person.
Yeah, say it again on the mic, because to talk about this authorization of a multifamily housing tax exemption for a really unique project for us.
So, good evening, council members. Jacinda Stelchus, somewhat new to the city, Affordable Housing Program Manager. I'm here, sorry. Here to request approval of a resolution for a multifamily housing tax exemption project, a 12-year affordable housing project. This project is being in the works at 113 DeVoe Street Northeast and is converting a former veterinarian clinic into multi-use with a nonprofit on the ground floor, and four new affordable studio units on that top floor. So these are units, just a reminder, with multifamily, with the 12-year, again, these are affordable units, so that means that they are affordable, meaning no more than 30% of the household's income going toward their rent, to folks in our community making 80% of area median income. And again, these are studio apartments, so a one-person household in our community, 80% area median income, is about $56,500. Again, so four new units dedicated toward affordable housing long-term in this mixed-use project.
All right, just for clarification, their household income would be $56,000 a year?
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Excellent. Any questions for Jacinda? Well, welcome, and thanks. You got your first, your first presentation out, you know.
Thanks, yes, now. You did great. It was a great night for it, too.
Thank you. And then I'm gonna go to Councilmember Gwen, who is our Chair of CLIPS, Committee of Livability and Public Safety Commission, to talk about our advisory committee and commission appointments.
All right, folks, so we have a lot of appointments and a lot of work leading up to be able to have this come before us tonight, and so just want to take a moment to tell you a little bit about what that looked like and really honor the work put into it. So, a little bit background, the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee opened recruitment in October and received 67 total applications to fill 17 vacancies across seven advisory boards, commissions, and committees. The respective advisory bodies screened the initial applications and then had candidates that they recommended to interview with our Community Livability and Public Safety Committee. So over two evenings on March 1st and 2nd, the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee herein after, will be referred to as CLIPS, interviewed 28 candidates. The committee is recommending 17 of the 28 candidates for appointment tonight to vacancies on the Arts Commission, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the Heritage Commission, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, the Planning Commission, the Social Justice and Equity Commission, and the Utility Advisory Committee. CLIPS is also recommending 17 currently serving advisory committee members for reappointments tonight. Also, a note on the Cultural Access Program Advisory Board, CLIPS will be interviewing candidates for the inaugural Cultural Access Program Advisory Board later in April. We've received 32 applications and we are considering nine seats, and we anticipate those appointment recommendations coming before the full council on May 9. And I think I would be remiss if I didn't give a thank you to Kelly Purse-Brossit for getting all of those facts together for me and helping me put it so beautifully, so thank you.
All right. Oh, Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I just want to take a second to thank the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee for the extra work on this. Having done it the first couple of years I was on council, I know what it takes, and I know it's something that we constantly have to reinvent, to keep fresh, and actually to keep yourself interested, honestly, and really appreciate the work you've done. So thanks for bringing us a great slate.
Thank you. And we've got three more commissions that we seat since you've been on council.
Yes.
Somebody used to stop.
We keep creating, I know, it's our fault. All right, so I have a motion and a second to accept tonight's consent calendar. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion passes. Thank you. Thank you to staff for all the work that goes on to that consent.
Oppose, motion passes. Thank you. Thank you to staff for all the work that goes on to that consent calendar. Uh, next we are on to uh, we have a couple of public hearings. Uh, five A is a hearing on the Community Development Block Grant Programs, Five-Year Consolidated Plan Update. And to explain what all that means, we have Anastasia Everett, who is our CDBG Program Specialist. Welcome, Anastasia. And uh you're going to be doing a presentation on uh the update. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor Selby and council members. For the record, my name is Anastasia Everett and I am the city's CDBG Program Specialist. Um, thank you for the opportunity to present the material for tonight's public hearing on the Consolidated Plan Update. And especially on tonight, this is the best council meeting I've ever been to. So, thank you. Oh. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development requires a public hearing before a draft consolidated plan is written. Consolidated plans are drafted every five years. This hearing is intended to obtain input on needs, development of proposed activities, and strategies and actions for fair housing. The hearing is also an early opportunity to comment on draft amendments to the public particip- public participation plan. There is no action required after the hearing. Another hearing will be held this spring to consider the draft consolidated plan and the twenty-twenty-three annual action plan. The consolidated plan process includes three primary parts. First, public and stakeholder input to identify priority needs and goals. Following step one is drafting the consolidated plan and annual action plan. Both Thurston County and Olympia are soliciting for projects to allocate twenty-twenty-three funds. Lastly, action to approve the consolidated plan and the twenty-twenty-three action plan and submitting to HUD for approval by July fifteenth. allocations of funds from Congress have never been consistent. The initial five-year estimates are based on twenty-twenty-three allocations and assumed for the next five years. The program year twenty-twenty-three allocation is three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. A consultant was hired to research and prepare a needs assessment and housing market analysis for the city and the county during the consolidated plan update process. Mr. Stalheim had previously worked for the city of Bellingham. Housing has been identified as the highest need in the early stakeholder input. The housing types and unit mixes are moving for, moving towards multifamily, but older housing stock is prevalent. Housing costs for both ownership and renters has increased significantly since twenty-fifteen. Low-income households are facing the biggest cost burdens, often paying more than fifty percent of their income on housing costs. This is a graph of the population ages sixty-five and over in Thurston County. The aging of the population in the last ten years is significant, adding twenty thousand people sixty-five and over. This graph illustrates the unemployment rate in Thurston County alongside the state and U.S. unemployment rates. Healthcare and social assistance added over two thousand workers since twenty-fifteen, and government continues to represent the significant part of the county's workforce. Early public stakeholder input was conducted by subconsultants of Mud Bay Consulting, Paul Knox and Beth Doleo. Uh, public stakeholder input was collected from November twen- November twenty-twenty-two through January twenty-twenty-three. Focus groups and interviews featured interviews from leadership from the cities of Yelm, Tenino, Bukota, and Lacey. Nonprofits interviewed include South Sound Senior Services, Boys and Girls Club, Habitat for Humanity, Family Support Center for South Sound, Community Youth Services, Homes First, Northwest Cooperative Development Center, Catholic Community Services, Together Food Bank, Kioti Communities, and Community Action Council. An online survey was emailed to stakeholders. Highlights include creation of affordable housing overwhelmingly the top first choice, followed by public services and public facilities and infrastructure improvements. This graph illustrates the results from the community survey related to housing priorities. The highest priorities include new housing construction, rehabilitation of existing housing, and rental assistance. This slide contains the survey results for public facilities and infrastructure improvement priorities. Helping special needs such as accessibility improvements was the highest priority, followed by water and sewer line installation and neighborhood facilities improvements. This graph illustrates the survey results from economic development priorities. Redevelopment, job training, and micro enterprise assistance were ranked the highest priority by survey takers. The stakeholder input supported survey findings with some adjustments. Concerns received from stakeholders included a need for senior housing, facilities and infrastructure improvements, rental assistance, and a need for housing for large families. Stakeholders also indicated a desire for consistency for identifying priorities and selecting projects for CDBG and home funding. The five-year consolidated plan includes the first-year annual action plan for twenty-twenty-three. The twenty-twenty-three annual action plan will be similar, the process will be similar to each year's action plan, except that the action plan will be included within the five-year consolidated plan. The city of Olympia is in the process of drafting the twenty-twenty-three annual action plan. In March, a request for proposals was launched. Recommendations will be made to the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee in April and to the City Council in May. HUD requires a public participation plan. Staff has identified some amendments to be included in the consolidated plan. Early input would be welcome. The primary change is what prompts a substantial amendment to the annual action plan. Substantial amendments require a thirty-day public comment period, period, uh, public hearing and approval by HUD. The changes would allow an increased allocation of funds if additional program income is received, pursuit of contingency projects identified in the annual action plan, and allows for urgent needs such as public health emergencies. Staff are proposing these changes to lessen the administrative burden in reallocating funds. The process for substantial amendments to the annual action plan is staff-intensive. These changes will allow flexibility with staff concerning changes in projects or unexpected program income received. Uh, this is a public hearing to get early input before the consolidated plan and annual action plan are drafted. There is no action required tonight. Uh, myself and our consultant, Mr. Stalheim, are available for questions.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, we didn't have anybody sign up for uh the hearing. Is there anyone from the, on the dais that has any questions for Anastasia? Mayor Portim.
Anastasia, the um, the amendments that you're you're discussing there, are those to apply uh countywide across all the the Home Fund, the County CD, Community Development Block Grant, and Olympias?
Uh, yes, this is to my understanding because it's a joint public participation plan and um Mr. Stalheim can chime in if I'm incorrect about this on Zoom, but.
Thank you. That's, that's great. So we're, we're, we're seeking public input here in Olympia as the other jurisdictions are, that I'm assuming.
Um, they, the other jurisdictions, Thurston County has a public hearing, I believe, April eighteenth, is um for the same process.
Thanks for your work on this.
Uh, Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Thank you, Anastasia. Um, I appreciate the needs work being done prior to writing the plan. It's a, it's a nice addition. My question is. Sorry, I have to, not used to seeing myself on a screen. My, my question is about the county's process. And I, I know that they've had the tradition or the co- the relationship with the other jurisdictions of rotating every three years. And I'm just wondering, do we have a sense that they might narrow the scope of that rotation a little bit based on what we're seeing in the needs data? Or will the three uh partners be able to choose from the whole menu of CDBG um opportunity?
That's a great question. Thank you. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure on their process that they're going to um choose moving forward. Um, David, if you want to hop in on this one.
Sure. Thank you, Anna. Uh, David Stalheim, Mud Bay Consulting Services up here in Bellingham. And uh, I think Thurston County is going to uh maintain the same process that they've had uh in the past, so the same rotation. Uh, there is a potential, however, uh, that Lacey has now grown uh its population, that it may become uh an entitlement community itself. And so there may be discussions that are happening uh or will happen that uh will change uh what happens. So it might be Thurston County and the remaining small cities uh or other cities in the community there.
Thank you.
I guess while David's up there, I've got a question that uh either one of you might have the answer for. So is it an either/or? So if uh Lacey, uh, because they're bigger than us now population-wise, do they uh, I don't know what the word is, but do they, would we need to move back into working with just the county on our CDBG? Or can we both be entitlement communities and the county?
Uh, we would both remain, we would remain an entitlement community and then Lacey would become its own entitlement community. Uh, and then the county would also remain a consortia.
Got it. Okay, because at first, there was some confusion at one point when I was talking, I think, with the mayor of Lacey. And it made it sound like, you know, if they chose to be the entitlement city, we couldn't be. So that's not good. Okay. It's good to know. Uh, Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. Um, yeah, actually, we might be one of the only cities in the United States that's spelled out in the congressional legislation by name. I, I believe a former mayor told me that. So be worth a history lesson for someone someday.
Dig in the archives.
I, I wanted to, you know, I, I, it'd be interesting to see what Lacey does with this, with this opportunity. But one question that I've had all along, and I think this five-year conversation is a good time for the city to think about, do we weigh in on the county-wide five-year plan? And ask them and their partners to consider narrowing to housing and housing-related projects based on the needs data that we've just seen. And I don't know if that's a, a bunch of individuals or the s- the city going to the public comment process or it, or taking it through our conversation at RHC, which is not quite about CDBG. Um, but to me, it feels like it's timely for the city to provide input on the county-wide plan as we write our own portion of the county-wide plan. But I don't know if there's a staff recommendation for how we might finesse that to make sure we don't ruffle partner feathers and we get the best outcome.
I think there's some, there's some partners that could be, that their feathers would be, yeah. Yeah, good.
Um, yeah, we would have to check in with our county partners first before staff could have any recommendation.
Absolutely. And I think pers- perspective's a little bit important at this point as well. We bring in well over two and a half million dollars a year in the Home Fund. LT, we have all these other funding streams, and this is three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. So the amount of energy to try and make other people, I, I don't know. I just think it's, it's worth um, considering that it's, it's a huge amount of money.
That there's a six million over the five-year period that we uh, we don't have a touch point on. That's all I'm saying is.
With the counties.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, is, they've talked about and dangled the possibility of being more specific with that money. And I think it'd be really nice, even if they just said one goal within the CDBG, rather than just allowing the partners to rotate without narrowing it down.
Sure, I, I agree. Uh, Jay, our city uh manager has some input.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I think we can take an opportunity, knowing that the county still has a public hearing that they have to conduct. I think we have an opportunity to, to share our input from the Olympia City Council um in looking at the needs assessment and the data that came from it and asking for some narrowing. So I think we can, we can give that feedback forward certainly because this process is still open for that conversation. So I, I'm looking at staff and they are taking notes and of this conversation. So we will make sure we relay that forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thanks. Uh, Councilmember Persley.
That was such a great discussion. I almost forgot my question, which is about the urgent needs. And I'm as, I'm assuming urgent needs don't happen once a year. Is that going to be in a supplemental ask in the future? Like another health crisis or housing issue that we suddenly need some money? Uh, can you explain that process to me a little better?
Yes. Uh, urgent need is one of the three national objectives alongside slum blight removal and a benefit to low moderate income persons. Um, as it stands in our public participation plan, we don't have any contingencies. Um, if there were to be a public emergency, and I believe it's a national emergency, has to be declared. I, I think it's a national one. And this would allow us to forego some of the um burden, administrative burden on um routing CDBG funding towards urgent needs.
Yeah, great. All right. Thank you so much, Anastasia. Uh, so we are going to open a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant Program Five-Year Consolidated Plan Update. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? There was nobody that signed up remotely or in person. Anybody that would like to speak to the plan? Now I'm now closing the hearing on item five A. We're going to move to item five B, which is also a, a hearing on the Draft Housing and Urban Development Two Thousand Twenty-Three, Two Thousand Twenty-Seven Fair Housing Assessment. And at this time, I'm going to invite forward Krista Lenson, who I believe is remote tonight. Hi, Krista.
Nancy, you've been.
Wonderful. Do you want to give us some background on this um fair housing assessment?
Great. Yes, I do um have a PowerPoint as well. So let me just um pull up my screen for you all and then ready to go. All right. Good evening, Mayor Selby and council members. For the record, my name is Krista Lenson. I'm a housing program specialist for the city of Olympia. Um, so tonight we'll be holding a public hearing on the assessment of fair housing. Um, so tonight I'll just go over a high-level overview of that process, some summary data, and the goals that came out of that assessment. Uh, and there's no action required tonight. Um, just for some background, and Anastasia already went over uh good information to set the stage for this already. Um, as part of our consolidated planning process, um, we are required to do fair housing planning. And basically, um, any HUD-funded um entities, um jurisdictions are required to do fair housing planning to ensure that projects or efforts they're funding um don't worsen segregation, discrimination, um, or disparities for members of protected classes. And so jurisdictions do this type of fair housing analysis every five years with their consolidated plan. And uh for this cycle, the county, the city of Olympia, and the housing authority of Thurston County uh opted to do a joint assessment of fair housing. Uh, we did this the last time, five years ago, and um opted to do that again. So HUD provides kind of a template for this process. And the current version is called an assessment of fair housing. Um, however, there is a rule, a proposed rule out right now for public comment that will slightly change the process and the template in our future cycles. Um, and the emphasis really of those changes is to ensure that there is transparency and accountability. So now jurisdictions will have to have their plan approved by HUD. It has to be reviewed and approved by their HUD representative. And they have to show that they are making annual progress on the goals that they set out. Um, just to give some background on fair housing laws. So federally, the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing on the protected classes listed below. Um, those are race, color, national origin, religion, disability, sex, and family status. And then in Washington State, we have additional protections under the Washington State law against discrimination. And just for reference, HUD and the Washington State Human Rights Commission enforce those laws. So they enforce the Federal Fair Housing Act and the Washington State law against discrimination. So people who have experienced discrimination may file a complaint with one of those agencies for investigation. Uh, source of income discrimination is prohibited by our Landlord-Tenant Act. Um, so it does not follow the same process as those other laws. Just to give some background on the process for this report. Um, in the fall, we conducted community outreach and engagement to learn more about the barriers and the needs faced by our community. Um, we had an online survey on the Engage Olympia platform that received over six hundred responses. And as well conducted one-on-one interviews with local organizations um such as Northwest Justice Project, CLO, The Ark of Washington, um Veterans Affairs, and other local organizations. In the winter, uh, we assembled uh community data, so the assessment of. So the assessment of fair housing has a large data analysis component, which includes things like census data or the American Community Survey, HUD data, and other local data sources like our point-in-time count or our local eviction data. In the winter, we wrote a draft report and then that was reviewed by partners at the county and the housing authority of Thurston County. So this spring, we presented a draft set of goals to the Housing Action Team, which is a group of nonprofit and local jurisdictions that meets monthly. And they're under the umbrella of Thurston Rides. As well, on that same day, we presented to Regional Housing Council and incorporated feedback received from those groups. So right now, our public comment period is open and it is also open for Thurston County. And their public hearing, as Anastasia mentioned, is on April 18th. So just some key findings. I'm just going to go over some really high-level information, but there is more detail in your attachments as well. So people of color, people with disabilities, people who are transgender and single mothers in our community are cost burdened at higher rates in their housing, are more likely to be renters than homeowners, are at higher risk of displacement, are more likely to experience homelessness and face continuing gaps in homeownership in Thurston County. The cost of housing and income disparities contribute to risk of displacement through things like eviction or being unable to afford housing and limit housing options for protected classes. Thurston County residents are most likely to experience and report discrimination based on their source of income, disability, race, and family status. Thurston County is lacking both accessible and affordable units to meet the needs of residents with disabilities. We heard that infrastructure and improved access to transit is important for the disability community. And some specific things mentioned were curb cuts and sidewalks, as well as improvement to dial lift and other transit services. Mold, high heating or lack of heating, and high cooling or lack of cooling are top environmental health concerns in housing and really disproportionately impact people with disabilities and can worsen their symptoms. Native American households face greater difficulty in accessing opportunities based on where they live. They have the highest transportation costs of any racial or ethnic group, the least access to job opportunities and high-performing schools, and are more likely to live in lower-income neighborhoods. While on paper, the data didn't really suggest that there were many issues with overcrowded housing situations or housing with inadequate kitchen or plumbing facilities. However, in talking with community advocates, we found that as more people are pushed to the margins and out of traditional housing situations, we, I heard many circumstances of things like somebody staying in an RV in an open field with no access to utilities or plumbing, or staying in sheds or garages. Advocates at CLO also noted that many community members self-evict after receiving an initial notice and end up moving in with family members in apartments. And again, the cost of housing was repeated over and over in the survey as the biggest barrier in being able to choose where to live. And so that was one of the priorities that we heard most in the assessment of fair housing survey. So in looking at the data from HUD and the Washington State Human Rights Commission over the past five years, the majority of complaints filed were based on disability, followed by race and family status. In our community survey, over 600 respondents participated and 38% believe that they or someone they know has experienced housing discrimination in Thurston County. And the survey findings aligned pretty closely with those complaint statistics in the last slide of those files that disability, race, and family status were common. However, the most people reported that they have experienced discrimination based on their source of income. And I'd also like to note that only 12% of respondents to the survey who reported an experience of discrimination filed a complaint. 60%, 63% of those respondents didn't pursue filing a complaint because they didn't think it would make a difference. And 68% didn't file a complaint because they didn't know who to contact. So in the survey, community members were asked to prioritize strategies to increase equity and reduce disparities among protected classes in Thurston County. And so the top four priorities were really clearly chosen by the majority of respondents with overwhelmingly the first choice being more affordable housing or direct financial assistance for housing costs for low-income individuals and families, followed by increasing access to homeownership, housing in a variety of types and sizes to meet various family sizes and needs, and reducing barriers to accessing housing such as criminal history or credit history. And then kind of a tie between the other priorities listed here below is focused on education and enforcement of fair housing laws and source of income protections. So now I'm going to move into some of the goals coming out of the fair housing report. And I just want to note that because this was done regionally, that some of these goals might be undertaken by the Regional Housing Council. Some might be undertaken by the city of Olympia in particular. Others are on the work plan for Housing Action Team subgroups. And so not all of these are going to be specific only to the city of Olympia. And many of the goals align with work outlined in the Housing Action Plan or other related work plans. So goal number one, increasing affordable housing. So funding for development or acquisition of housing units that are affordable to low-income households is the first priority. Creating a developer toolkit or resource page so that we can more effectively market and inform potential developers of our incentive programs. Locating additional funding for rent assistance to low-income households, especially those who are at risk of eviction, or creating some incentives for property owners to keep their rents lower. Considering and recommending any additional relocation assistance programs for adoption. Okay. And then goal two is increasing access to homeownership. So provide funding for homeownership activities such as credit counseling or down payment assistance. City of Olympia will be undertaking a study this year. So we'll be contracting with a consultant to look at non-traditional and affordable homeownership opportunities. So we may be able to share those findings and implement recommendations on a county-wide or regional level. Creating or sharing information with the public about homeownership support. There are some existing resources in our community for homeownership. And so better advertising or developing partnerships so that we can really leverage and layer on support with those existing resources would be helpful. Increasing housing in a variety of types and sizes. So one possibility is exploring feasibility of offering impact fee waivers or other incentives for ADUs if they meet affordability standards, if they create enhanced accessibility, or partner with a local nonprofit to place a tenant in the unit. So we already have pre-approved ADU plans that have some basic accessibility standards. But we could look to best practices for additional accessibility design and construction features in a sort of list of enhancements or an updated ADU plan for community members. Ensuring mix of bedroom sizes or increased accessibility in residential development in the RFPs released by the city. And I just wanted to note that we were able to include that as an additional factor in our recent RFP for the Franz Anderson Road Project. Provide referrals and funding to support accessible, accessibility modifications in existing units. And strive to provide matching funds for developers who are seeking housing trust fund developmental disability set aside funding. Reducing barriers to accessing housing. So exploring the cost to contract with a third-party organization to provide training to landlords and tenants on fair housing and source of income discrimination laws and disparate impacts of overly restrictive criminal history policies. Reviewing models for a county-wide program to reduce barriers of entry. So at the Housing Action Team, we've had a program called Housing Connector that's been working in Pierce and King Counties, come and share about their program model. But there may be other models we can look to that help higher barrier tenants to access housing. And then reviewing any additional policy options from other jurisdictions. There are other cities across the US who have implemented, limited what credit or criminal history can be used in the screening process. Next goal is increasing fair housing education, outreach and enforcement. So updating web-based and print publications about fair housing so people know their rights and how to file complaints. I just want to note that as part of the rental housing work group, which is a subgroup of the Housing Action Team, this is on our work plan for this year. Offer fair housing-related trainings or presentations to landlords, tenants, or housing advocates. Additionally, that's on our work plan for the rental housing work group as well. We strive to offer three webinars every year. Lobbying state legislature to strengthen and adequately staff the Human Rights Commission. Currently, the State Human Rights Commission has fewer than five full-time investigators for all of the fair housing cases filed in Washington State. Explore cost to contract with a third-party organization to enforce statewide source of income discrimination protections for Thurston County tenants. As I noted earlier, because it's under the Landlord-Tenant Act, there is a different process and there is no government enforcement agency specifically tasked to investigate those complaints or enforce that law. And last, exploring the cost to contract with a third-party organization to provide training on fair housing and source of income discrimination laws. Goal six is about improving the health of housing units. So funding for rental property owners and low-income homeowners for energy efficiency upgrades. There is a lot of work happening at the city and I think we have a lot to leverage right now in partnership with the climate team as well. Providing trainings to landlords and tenants regarding mold prevention and treatment. And reviewing best practices and codes in other jurisdictions that adequately address mold prevention. So in the Housing Action Team meeting, I heard feedback that current codes don't address mold prevention and some best practice guidance does exist and other jurisdictions that can be shared. So this is the end of my presentation for tonight, but I'm available for any questions. And just a reminder, there's no action required after the public hearing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Krista, for joining us tonight. That was a lot of information. It was a very, very well-done process. Really proud of your work. I'm going to open it for any questions before I open up the public hearing. Mayor Protem Gilman followed by Councilmember Pershley.
So I want to go easy tonight, but I also want to be clear, I guess. First, Krista, could you speak briefly to, there's, there's a section that just smacked me in the face and that was about mortgage approval rates and people who won conventional financing broken down by race.
Yes, so I can.
Could you just briefly tell that story? That shocked me.
Yeah, I was going to see if I could actually pull it up on the screen if that was possible, but it might take me too long. Yeah, so in this report, I looked at the Home Mortgage Disclosure Act data for our community. So we looked at a period of about four years. And findings were that white residents in Thurston County are approved for conventional mortgages at higher rates than residents of color. And so without the data right in front of me, I know that there are more people of color who approve working with like VA loans or federal FHA loans, which are often not as desirable to sellers. There can be more hoops to jump through to, in that process of selling the homes. So usually if they have a choice between a conventional mortgage and one of those other programs, they might choose the conventional mortgage as a more attractive offer.
Thank you. I just, that story lit a fire under me. It's just, to me, it's extremely sobering to see that black people and indigenous people still have just a really unfair shake when they, when they go to try to purchase a home. And I'm just, I'm just going to throw this question out in the air. You don't, don't need to try to address it, but it, between rent burden folks, housing insecure people, folks who had environmental health concerns, each of those categories were over half of our community, thousands of households. And so I'm trying to, to get my head around how many, how many houses, how many residential units would need to be created to, to address the affordability access? How many would need to be improved to address the environmental health? Without those numbers, I don't know whether improving 25 units is, is impactful or whether it's simply eclipsed by growth of our community each year. And so that's, that's my big wondering is, is whether the actions on our current plans would bring change at a scale and a speed necessary to, I'm assuming we have a goal like we did with homelessness, particularly around vets, to try to get to functional zero. Do we have a goal for fair access to housing with a special emphasis on these protected classes who are historically living housing insecure, you know, to get to a functional zero? And I, I just, I, I'm just, I'm really wondering about that. And I don't see the connection between the actions and the dire picture that your study painted.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment and question. I think, you know, part of, part of the formation of the goals was looking at the resources available and the funding sources available and kind of the pace of affordable housing development that we've been able to have with the home fund and with the other funding sources we have currently. But I think you're absolutely right that it doesn't come close to meeting the need that's in our community. And I think that some of the numbers that we have around households who are earning, you know, 80% or less AMI or 50%. you know, 80% or less AMI or 50% less AMI, you know, paint part of the picture of people who, you know, are struggling and are rent burdened in this community. And we'll be looking at more data from Commerce to about the housing that we need to develop every year and over time in order to meet the needs of households at those income levels. So, I think it is definitely an ongoing conversation. And sadly, to answer your question, I think these are not... These are not numbers that will meet the needs of all the people who have these needs in our community, but based more on the funding that we have available at this time.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much, Krista.
Okay. I missed Councilmember... I missed Councilmember Madron was after Mayor Protem, so I'm going to go to Councilmember Madron, followed by Councilmember Parshley.
Well, thanks so much for your work on this, Krista. I love the idea of creating an additional pre-approved ADU design with better accessibility to it, because part of the story with ADUs is intergenerational living, and as folks get older, they sometimes need more, you know, accessibility. So, I wholeheartedly appreciate that one. And I... My question is about... So, the heart of all of this work that you're doing is equity. And we have our Social Justice and Equity Commission that we've created here, and the likelihood of being able to get in front of them with their busy work plan before this has to be done and submitted is probably pretty low, so I'll acknowledge that upfront. But at what point does this body of work go in front of the Social Justice and Equity Commission, perhaps to inform the update to our comprehensive plan and make sure that the people that we've brought on to advise us on social justice and equity issues are part of this work?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So, I was able to attend the November Social Justice and Equity Commission, which was just before the survey closed. So, I was able to share some information about the survey and the work done in this assessment, as well as they were curious about the renter protections steps that the city had taken as well. So, I was able to share some information at that time. And they are currently doing a community discrimination assessment right now. They have a consultant on board to help them with that work. And I am participating in the staff work team, and will share this information with the consultants who are working on that report, so they can pull in this housing piece as well and follow up on any additional questions or outstanding needs that we identify as a group. But they'll also be looking at things like employment or other forms of discrimination in that assessment as well.
Excellent. I'm glad you're tied into that work. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Parshley.
Couple points. The first is just a story to relate to you. One of my associate's sister-in-law is an African-American realtor in Pierce County, and she related a story that just shocked me. If she wants to get the best value for a house that she's the broker or realtor for, she does not show up as an African-American woman during the inspection. She sends one of her white employees. So, this is still a serious problem, and it's sad that a realtor in Pierce County has to think that way when she represents people of all colors. Just want to put it out. It's not just mortgage, it's what the houses get valued for. There's a couple of things. When I was on land use, it seems like a long time ago, we had developers come in on a day-long event. And one of the things that stuck with me, and I'm just going to bring it back up, is the mention that in Tacoma, they have educators in the permitting office for pre-Subs to let developers learn about all the incentives, the MFTEs, the impact fee discounts, climate up there, and a few others, that allows the developers right in the permitting process to learn all the options they have to reduce the costs. And it was recommended, actually, I think it was Habitat for Humanity, that Olympia looks into something like that to make it a little more friendly for developers trying to do affordable housing. Just going to throw that one back out. The other one is, not that I want to make more work for staff, but we have an equity lens and a climate lens. When we're talking about leveraging land for building housing, like we did with Boulevard, should we not automatically put ownership and things like that into the process instead of having to come from council, which I am surrounded by amazing six other people that will remind you, but it should be sort of part of our lens, just an automatic. And then two more points. When you go to the county, I think you should bring Olympia strong data. It's an independent source of information suggesting affordable housing is very important when you're talking about CDBG in this plan. And it's just an independent survey done in a different process that supports everything both plans found. Lastly, I love the idea of education, because don't discount education, especially with the fact that discrimination is higher in those of lower income. And if you can educate the tenants, you're more likely to allow them to not get into situations where landlords unknowingly or knowingly are going to discriminate against them. Education is super important. It may be very big in reducing some of that discrimination.
Anything else from the days before I open the public hearing?
All right. So, once again, we had nobody sign up for a public hearing for Item 5B, which is the Draft Housing and Urban Development 2023-2027 Fair Housing Assessment. At this time, I will open the hearing and offer the opportunity to anybody in the room. You're all employees, so probably not one advisory committee member. All right. So, I'm going to close the public hearing on Item 5B. And since it was just a hearing, we do not take action this evening, but thank you, Krista, so much for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to Item 6A, which is approval of recommended 2023 traffic box wrap designs, another one of our beloved arts programs seen all over town. And so, it's my pleasure to invite forward Stephanie Johnson, Arts Commission Staff Liaison, and Kathy Dorgan, who's Vice Chair of our Arts Commission. Thanks for your patience tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Selby, and members of council. Again, for the record, Stephanie Johnson, Parks, Arts, and Recreation. With me is Vice Chair of the Olympia Arts Commission, Kathy Dorgan. And we are here this evening with the recommendation of 10 new traffic box wrap designs. We received 71 applications this year with voting held in the month of February. 1,536 respondents on Engage Olympia had three votes each, and the top 10 were reviewed by the Arts Commission on March 9th, and Vice Chair Dorgan is here to present them to you.
And I am very pleased to present these 10 designs. These are our top 10. So, right? Number 221, Hidden Colors of Forest by Susanna Bulatovic. 221 votes. Oh, those are the votes. I thought it was the number. Number 221 votes to Hidden Colors of Forest by Susanna Bulatovic from Olympia Oil on Canvas. 187 votes, Homecoming by Sarah Folden of Tumwater, Washington, Mixed Media. 160 votes, Olympia's Golden Hour by Missy Maxwell, also from Olympia Digital Media. 145 votes, Devotion by Robin Chance, Olympia Oil. 113 votes, Heron Sunset by Nancy Broach from Olympia. It's a watercolor. 109 votes, Wild by Sarah Geddes, Olympia, Relief Carving. 103 votes for Frolicking by Fran Patosnick from Olympia, Upcycled Aluminum Cans. 103 votes also for Floral Peacock by Darcy Gadecki, Lacy, Digital Painting. 102 votes, Spirits of the Trees by Renee Westbrook of Lacy. It's a digital overlay. And 95 votes for Backyard Pandemic Poppies by Maggie Post, Tumwater Watercolor. And the motion before you is to approve the publicly selected designs for Olympia traffic boxes for fabrication and installation.
You heard a lot of oohs and ahs and yes.
I was remembering some of them.
Little murmurs of appreciation up here. These are gorgeous. I think probably one of the nicest groups of offerings you've brought forward. They're all beautiful, but these are really, really remarkable. Any comments from Councilmember Parshley?
I took the survey, and I found it really difficult to choose. There's an amazing number of artists that put pictures in, so the ones that didn't make it to the top 10, there were still some gorgeous ones. Just wanted to say that.
The depth of talent here is incredible. Question, I've probably asked this before. Do we get any kind of other rights to that artwork besides being able to put it on... Can we make note cards? Can we make posters?
Actually, I've been asked about note cards. In fact, I think Communications has made note cards before first half, and as I understand it, that we are out. And so, when I talk with these artists about their contract, and it does say in the contract and the agreement that we can use them for other purposes, but I will also, as courtesy, ask them if they're okay with having their image on the card.
Sure, sure, yeah. They're, you know, I think a lot of people would like to have one of those in their home, too.
Anything else? All right. So, I think we need a motion, right? Councilmember Parshley, are you ready?
I move to approve the publicly selected designs for the Olympia traffic box for fabrication and installation.
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Unanimous, thanks again. Thank you, thank you. And don't go far.
You're right.
We've got another art-related other business item. Item 6B tonight is approval of artist-in-residence recommendation that we need a motion on, I believe. So, again, Stacy Johnson and Kathy Dorgan.
Thank you again, Mayor Selby, Stephanie Johnson, Parks, Arts, and Recreation, and Kathy Dorgan, Vice Chair of the Olympia Arts Commission. So, this artist-in-residence pilot project was developed by the Arts Commission to make the arts acceptable or accessible, to make the arts accessible to traditionally underserved populations. It actually kind of came a little bit out of council's feeling about the grand arts and culture organizations, where you were really interested in hands-on rather than passive engagement with the arts. So, this has been a slow-burner project begun in February 2020 with a discussion with the then-city's Homeless Response Coordinator, Colin DeForest, who came to an Arts Commission meeting, followed by Kim Conratt, who he worked with after that. And Arts Commissioners Kathy Dorgan, Kathy Murray, and Stacy Hicks then researched similar programs in other communities and laid the groundwork for development of a policy and a loose program structure of what they wanted to accomplish. So, we've come to a clip several times, but I don't think we've come to full council. So, we're going to dive deep and let you know where we've come from on this.
This artist-in-residence pilot project... Oh, we're here. We struggled with how to be true partners with underserved community members rather than forcing an agenda. So, the first thing we did was do some research. We started by looking at communities kind of in the Pacific Northwest of a similar size to Olympia and what their artist-in-residence programs involved, and found that there were all different kinds of residencies. Some create exhibits and support artists, but the one we were most interested, again, following council's direction, was looking at things that allowed residents to actually make art, recognizing the inherent value of art to add to the beauty and satisfaction in people's lives, and making art is a part of that. So, to get a little more information, I actually spoke with someone at the National Endowment for the Arts. You can just call them. I talked to the woman named Victoria Hutton from Engagement, and she talked about the most important kinds of projects, which dovetailed nicely, which what we were looking for involved diversity, equity, inclusion, and, most importantly, accessibility. So, that artist-in-residence projects need to be something that the people who are being served are... Have the capacity to do, to carry with them, to keep, that it really does enhance and enrich their lives and enhances their engagement in their community, as well as build community between the participants. So, ask them what they're missing, what they wish for, and that was their advice to me, which was really helpful for us. So, in going through then, an artist at the Community Development Table, training with Arts Program Specialist Angel Nava, we came across with the not for approach to art, but with. So, with, not for, the community that we're serving, which is intentional equitable planning rooted in a long-term investment and a commitment for them over time. We realized that we take a similar approach already in our art crossing projects, and we constructed this process to include our community partners from the very beginning. So, we started with community surveys and began work with folks who seemed most interested in the opportunity. And based on the community response, which was music and dance, we... Drumming was the thing that emerged with us as a way to build community and hoping that it will continue within the residence. So, we put out the call for artist-in-residence earlier this year, and following application review, we hosted interviews at Drexel House. Among three very experienced candidates, Bobby Williams was able to best articulate how he would set the framework for the drumming group to continue past the residency to become a part of the culture at Drexel House. Some of you might know Mr. Williams from his work with, as Executive Director of the Bridge Music Project. What you may not know is that he grew up participating in drumming circles. In addition, he noted in his cover letter, quote, "I am passionate about the therapeutic value of music on those who have experienced trauma. I know the power music can have in building community and a sense of belonging." Following our interviews, Mr. Marvin Bennett, who was with us this evening from Drexel House, I lost my place. He in particular felt that Mr. Williams would resonate well with Drexel House residents. Over the course of the six weeks of classes that are stipulated in the call for artist-in-residence, the hope of the selection committee and the Arts Commission is to foster an ongoing sense of community and culture around the shared making of music that will last long past the final class.
I'm going to invite Mr. Bennett up to talk a little bit about his experience.
Hello, Mayor, Councilpeople. When I read about this program, I was so excited, you know, because I used to... I was on Halls Downtown for five years in Olympia. I used to play bucket drums, five-gallon white ones. You know, at that time, I was using... I'm playing sober now, been for a while. But I was playing, and I knew what I was doing, trying to keep a beat, so I thought I was really doing something. And I seen Bobby some, working down with some of the kids down there, you know, at the bridge project. I said, "Man, what can you teach me?" You know, I would love to get that, but it was for kids and stuff. Then this project came up, I was so excited, you know, when I see his name on there. I mean, the other guys were good, too, that were the Africans, but it's an opportunity to play with him. Then, so now, I play at home. I got some African drums at home I play on. You know, I don't go on street corners too much anymore, but this opportunity to learn the real beats now, you know, rhythms and stuff like that. Down there, I was just doing anything, because I thought I was doing something. There's an opportunity, they don't have like... There's a... There's an interface works at the barbecue they put on every year for me, so then it's a legacy barbecue. And like my brother's band comes up from Tacoma, like I got three brothers playing in a band. And I didn't play in a band, I should have, but I was really doing crazy stuff when I was growing up. But for me to be able to play with them on stage, you know, I have like a cajon, it's a drum, you sit on it, play it, and if I could play with them, it'd be like a dream come true for me. And Bobby can teach me how to do all that kind of stuff. And lastly, I talked to like 10, 15 people. They really want to, you know, do this drum circle, to give us something to do, be together. You know, everybody loves music and stuff like that, so I was hoping it would come to pass, if we can really do this. And I thank you, and God bless you guys. I know I talk fast, but I hope you're still...
We're obviously super excited, because we know Marvin is going to be a great ambassador for this program. And it's going to be held outside on the grounds of Drexel House at his suggestion, so that the residents will hear what's happening and how can they not want to come down and just be a part of that.
Oh, my gosh. This evening has just been so heartwarming, and, I'm sorry, you took, Mr. Bennett? We heard every word. Yes, we did, and, you know, I was telling Mayor Protem Gilman, I was like, this just makes me want to cry with happiness. This is what the arts can do, and we all feel so strongly about that in our community. And I think about what we can do with the Inspire Olympia dollars, because it's all about access and, you know, matching it with what the work that you guys, the groundwork that you've laid for programs like this. Oh, my gosh, I get chills. So anyhow, I would like to open it up to anyone else to talk. Councilmember Payne.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Mr. Bennett. You know, most of us in this room are just used to sitting through these meetings, but just thank you so much for sitting all the way through the agenda to get to your part tonight. Thank you so much for being here and representing your neighbors at Drexel House and for your work on the selection committee, and thank you to Stephanie and Kathy as well for your work as well on this, and to Bobby Williams, wherever you are out there. You know, it's, I've witnessed him sort of bring the community together in the streets, and so he really knows what he's doing, and you've picked a good person to serve in this capacity, so it's an honor to vote for you, Bobby, as the artist in residence at Drexel House tonight.
All right, I've got Mayor Protem, followed by Councilmember Partially.
I am so excited. I'm thinking about Arts Commission's meetings when I was doing the liaison thing with you all and talking about, there's both art that everybody can make, and then there's also sort of credentialed, formally trained art, and how do we make room for all those things in the community? So, we've been doing so much to make art for everybody and art for everybody to see, and this really feels like another huge step there. And I just want to also give credit that Uncle Marvin Bennett is actually my subject matter expert on matters of rhythm and percussion. And while you might not have remembered all the things you were doing when you were buckets on the street in front of the Pet Works there, those were some good beats. And I'm sure you're going to bring more collaborating with Bobby Williams to make this drum circle a success. I couldn't be more excited.
Wonderful, and next I have Councilmember Partially.
I'm just excited about the direction the city's taking. We get a poet laureate, we do art breaks, we see art as a way to grow our souls and mind and heal, and Bobby Williams is just amazing. I've seen the videos, I've seen him work with children who are at risk. You couldn't have picked a better person, and I suspect with the way he teaches, Marvin, you will be up with your brothers. I mean, that just would be fantastic, and I'm just very proud of our Arts Commission for showing us that arts should be part of everything we do.
All right, Councilmember Payne.
So, likely, the residents of Drexel House knows about this. I wonder, though, for members of the public, for us that might want to come and bear witness, I don't know if we'd be allowed to bang on anything. What is the, you know, what does the engagement there look like, and when can there be opportunities?
Yeah, you can go ahead. I'm flying right here, because it's the first time we've done it. It's a really good question, but one of the things that Marvin impressed upon us when we were kind of chatting in between interviews, and correct me if I'm wrong, Marvin, but he said that a lot of people at Drexel House hang out in their rooms, you know, they're kind of on their screens, and that's the part about it that really gets me excited, is that we're really building community. And sometimes building community can be a really fragile thing, and so that's my gut reaction to your question, is what I'm hoping, and this is purely selfish, purely me, is that that drum circle becomes something that is the culture at Drexel House. So, in a year from now, you know, people come, people go, but if that circle, no pressure, Marvin, but if that circle is still going strong and people coming there, you know, feel welcome, part of Bobby Williams' stipend is to buy some bucket drums, so that there are drums there, so that people can pick them up and play them. So, does that answer your question a little bit?
Yeah.
To be fair, you're flying, and that was a total pun. Though, yeah, I hear you. In the spirit of what is trying to be created here, we do want to respect that community building takes time, and we don't want to be a, you know, put anyone into a fishbowl situation.
I just had an idea, though.
Oh, okay.
Again, still flying and still punting. Marvin mentioned his barbecue. Could it be possible that the Drexel House Drumming Circle comes to the barbecue, and that would be a good opportunity for?
He says they can come, I just asked him.
Would that work? So that might be a place to kind of unveil the drumming circle in kind of a more public forum, and for the people who want to then. So, anyway, I'm going to stop brainstorming at the dais, and I will stop after this. It is, it is, no pressure, just folks are excited about this, and I also want to be sensitive that it's the first go-around. So, whatever makes sense, it's not a, you know, it's not a hard-to-do, it's just, you know, if and when it makes sense, it would be great to engage more community members in it, in a way that is thoughtful.
Thank you, and now I have Mayor Protem.
I would move to approve the recommendation of Bobby Williams as Drexel House artist in residence and direct staff to move forward with an agreement and a schedule.
Second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you so much for.
Thank you, and, you know, I would like to just say how grateful I am, as a former arts teacher and still really active in the arts in Olympia, how grateful I am to live in a place where the value of arts to uplift people and is recognized and supported in this way. I, too, am beyond excited about Inspire Olympia and all the other things that are happening. They wouldn't be happening without the support of council and the people of Olympia, so please accept my thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for your years and years of service. Right. All right. That takes us to council member reports. If there are any, I will go to the right, and I will start with Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I do have a couple of reports. The Regional Housing Council met on the 22nd, and we were briefed on HB 1220. This was a law passed by the legislature in 2021, and what it says is essentially like, under the Growth Management Act, we don't just have to plan for the number of housing units that we need to build, but also the different levels of affordability for housing units, and that includes permanent supportive housing and emergency shelters as well. So, the report is out from Department of Commerce. We've got a lot of housing to build in Thurston County, over 50,000 units, and right now there is a process going on to figure out how much of each different level of affordability each jurisdiction is going to have to incorporate into their comprehensive plan for a goal to build. And the affordability levels go down, like I said, emergency shelter, permanent supportive housing, zero to 30% AMI, all the way up to 120-plus percent AMI, and there's actually a significant gap on that higher end, it turns out. So, stay tuned, this will be something that each jurisdiction's going to have to take on as we update our comprehensive plans, and there'll be a reasonable process to figure out who's doing what, which share of these housing units that need to be built. Also, our advisory boards are stood up, this is both for homeless services and affordable housing. They'll be working on appointing chairs that will serve as non-voting members of the RAC very soon. We also are going to be having a change to our schedule. We're going to be moving down to once a month meetings come June, and we're going to do every other month in person or virtual, always a hybrid option, so that's exciting. And then, the Land Use and Environment Committee met on the 23rd, and we recommended that the joint plan update for how we work with the county in our urban growth areas, we recommended that that come to council, for us to make a recommendation to the county, with a couple of like, technical changes that we'll be requesting, like updating the name of Squaxton Park, and a couple of other just tweaks in that regard. And we also, good follow-up to the Fair Housing Assessment that Krista just presented, we also got briefed on, by Krista, on a scope of work to put out an RFP to help us understand how we can better address affordable homeownership, what kind of resources out there, how can we help build capacity among community organizations, what are the best practices, the models that are available, ten, opportunity to purchase, land trust, cooperative housing, you know, financial literacy for folks who would like to buy a house, and it's a very daunting process. So there's a pretty thorough scope of work. It is going to be honed in on affordable homeownership, knowing that our housing staff are taking on many other things as well, and we should have recommendations on that scope of work by the end of the year. That's all, yeah.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Madron? All right, thanks. Councilmember Payne.
Nothing to report, although I do just want to celebrate the fact that it is day 79 of 105 of the legislative session. And, and, you know, fun fact, just to show you, just, you know, to give you some insight on how ambitious our state legislature is, we introduced about, there were about 1,700 bills this session. That's a lot, and so we're expecting a few hundred of those to come before the governor. A few of those are things that are certainly priorities for us as a city, and I'm looking forward to getting a full picture of that from our lobbyists in the coming weeks.
Thank you, and hang in there. Mayor Protem Gilman.
Nothing to report.
Right. Mayor, Councilmember Partially.
The problem with so many weeks between is, I have a few reports, I'm sorry. The first is LOT. We had our meeting on March 8th, and the biggest thing of that meeting, in my opinion, actually, is the impact of the Total Maximum Daily Load Report, which is TMDL short, and we had the State Ecology Department there, which was bold of us, because a lot of times the organizations that are permitted by them don't want them in the building. But they came and they gave a very exacting overview of where the Bud Inlet is, and the fact that the EPA is calling it an impaired body, water body, and the TMDL is supporting that, with 62% of the impairment being directly from Capitol Lake, and they reported out that if they had their way, 99% of the Capitol Lake impairment portion would have to be cleaned up to make a significant impact on Bud Inlet water quality. This is separate than the port remediation, which is in the soil and sediment, this is actually the water quality, and the problem being is they can't regulate what's coming out of the lake. What they can regulate is LOT, which is 3%. Regulating us further will not change the water quality in Bud Inlet, bottom line. By the way, we did kind of repeat that to a few senators and representatives in the last few weeks. The other, we did get an update on our master planning, which will be coming back, because we have to do that for our permitting process. We also looked at our pre-treatment programs, and some of the wastewater epidemiology, which is pretty cool, because we're going to get involved with the CDC, and they're going to be sampling our water before it comes into treatment to start tracking things like COVID, but other diseases as well. And LOT is one of the few in Washington that's going, was selected by the CDC for that. The next thing that I have to report out on is finance, and Finance Committee, let's see if I can find it quick enough, Finance Committee met on March 15th, and we did a spotlight on the generally accepted accounting principles, which is accrual versus cash accounting, and while 80% of the state uses cash, that's also because they're below 15,000 residents. When you get to a larger jurisdiction, you really need to stay at accrual. We also did a climate funding referral process, which just reviewed some of the possible funding sources that we could get to. The ultimate, if I, my committee members can go along with this, is that this was a review of all the different funding possibilities, revenue streams, but the bottom line is, in August, when Pamela comes back with what she predicts a budget would be for the next five to 10 years, that will really influence which of the revenue streams is going to be the most adequate for going forward. And then, we did the fund balance above policy, which is not the year-end anymore, we're changing this. This is the money that we may have left over above the policy commitments for the budget. Did I get that right, Jay? And he is going to go over those on one-on-one with you. And then, lastly, I'm sorry, we've got one more, that's climate. We went over our, this is one of the last meetings we're going to have, because we will be coming forward with a new ILA and a guidance policy based on a staff-driven process instead of a TRPC. But we were able to get information on energy efficiency. This is not the white paper, but it is getting close to being the white paper, and some of the interesting facts out of this is 74% of the houses, and we mainly looked at residential, are electric, 24% are gas, and 6% are wood burning, which shame on Orca for changing our policy on wood burning, because that is still a significant problem. 70% of the single houses are single-family, and 70% are found in our urban areas. Lastly, majority of the houses in our area, which is of note, that will need to be retrofitted, were built from 1960 to 1999, and everything before that is a little different problem, but it is the minority. So it's sort of allowing people that are looking for incentives and policies for retrofits, you're looking at that kind of construction era. And the rest of the report will come later. And the ILA was not quite ready for viewing, the staff asked for us to come back in May to look at it. Mark, the legal assessment might land on your doorstep before it ends up at the committee, the regional committee, because we don't want to slow this down.
Any questions for Councilmember Partially? Mayor Protem?
Just a little clarification, that maybe it's a shame on Orca, but also that our particulate matter and the, you know, the cloud that hangs in our inversions no longer meets the federal thresholds for being air pollution, which also means we no longer have the congestion mitigation grants that come our way. So, the federal government has recognized that we actually did a pretty good job of cleaning up the air of particulates from wood burning in the city, so.
That's good, that the greenhouse goes, okay. Councilmember Payne.
Admittedly, I did whisper to Councilmember Cooper, "I love a smore."
So do I.
Okay, so for the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee, I feel like everyone's going to be honorary committee members after this meeting, but we, at our last meeting, it was really festive and joyous, it's a different meeting than others, where we had representatives, either the chair or vice chair, I think some of them have co-chairs, and then, or the staff liaisons were in the room with CLIPS committee members, that stands for Community Livability and Public Safety, and we broke bread together, we had cake together, we engaged in a, we actually did work, too, but we also, we did the coolest icebreaker, one of the coolest, no simplest ones, it's a brainchild of Kelly Pierce Brazes, and upon folks coming into the room, there was a big world map and a bunch of different colored pins, and you, there's, everyone got three colored pins, and you placed a pin for where you're from, and then where your parents are from, where your grandparents are from, and at the end... And, uh, at the end, what we have is all of these little data points, um, of, uh, these migration patterns and gen, through generations that brought us into this very room, um, and to, to serve Olympia. So just really, really lovely. Kelly said that too. Um, and, uh, and then of course we got our, uh, annual update, um, about, uh, what, uh, folks were really excited to have accomplished on the advisory groups, um, what they look forward to in their work plan. Um, and then, uh, we always ask like, what areas could we support you? And a lot of it, um, they answered, um, a lot of it is, uh, keep on keeping on, um, uh, specifically from, uh, the Chair of Heritage, uh, please do not, uh, tear down any historic buildings. So that was very explicit. Um, the, uh, we did notice that, um, there is, uh, quite a lot going on with, uh, the, with, uh, arts budget, um, and is, uh, at the moment trending in a downward trend. So we'll want to be watchful of that. Um, we, uh, got some comments from the Design Review Board that, uh, many people seem to not know what design review is. Um, and, uh, I had noted that there are sometimes negative biases that come with design review too. Um, and so, uh, just getting, uh, generally, uh, folks a better understanding of what do these different advisory groups do, um, especially when we are looking for more participants every year. Um, that was another note from Design Review is, uh, uh, trying to, um, make sure that they can fit, not just fill the seats, uh, of folks participating as advisory members, but also to get a really broad range, um, uh, not only diversity and demographics, but then also field of work. Um, and I think that is a sentiment that could be shared, uh, by all of our advisory, uh, groups. Um, and then, uh, something of note was that the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Group, uh, really, uh, asked, asked for more work. You know, they asked for what more can they do, um, uh, beyond their, their sort of an annual product that they deliver to us. Um, they would love to, uh, be more involved. They're feeling somewhat, uh, underutilized. Um, and, uh, it was, it was actually really beautifully put by, um, Bethany Roth, which is, uh, the current Chair, I believe. Um, and talking about, or maybe she was a vice chair, um, but talking about, uh, the connections, um, of BPAC and the social determinants of health, right? So not just a recreational activity. So really good stuff, um, and things to chew on. Um, and I always do hear little whispers when the, uh, the advisory groups come up about how we stand up a new one each year and I'm listening. Um, and I think that while not always so popular is, um, it's a, a good opportunity, uh, when it comes to talk about, you know, are they all still making sense? Are there opportunities to sunset or to combine, right? It's not about getting rid of things, but also making sure that we're, uh, that everything's still making sense and we're still getting what we need and also, uh, that they're all being supported in the way that they need support. Um, as well, um, this is a transition to a new topic. Um, the, uh, Olympia Youth Council keeps on keeping on. Um, uh, that's really due in, in, in part to, um, a great team here, um, at the city with Paul, Kelly, Susan and Amy on it. Um, the, the call for, uh, advi, or what are we, what are we calling them? Susan? Advisory?
Youth advisors.
Youth advisors. Um, the call for youth advisors is out. Now, as part of our team that's been existing for some time now, we do have two, um, two, uh, uh, youth liaisons, um, but we're making a broad call for youth advisors of which, uh, we will be selecting 25 of them. Um, but everyone plays a part. And so for the folks that are, are not selected as part of the 25, they will, um, have other ways to participate, um, perhaps through survey and, um, they will be entered in to win really hot raffle prizes. And then, um, the 25 that do, uh, get selected for participation, um, they, uh, will not only, uh, participate in a couple of meetings with us, but also, um, uh, be given a $200 stipend. Um, and those applications, uh, close on April 10th, so please share them far and wide. Anything else, can wait.
Thank you. Any questions for, yeah, there's, whoa.
Just, just a, a few quick comments on that. Um, thank you, uh, Councilmember Wayne. Um, first thing is, uh, on your point about BPAC, one of the things that I believe was on their work plan was sidewalk improvements and we had talked about that since we have a lot of work to do in that space, that potentially that's something, uh, that that group could be working on, uh, in, in this year. Um, the other thing, um, point that was expressed about the Design Review Board, um, was that, um, some of you may or may not know that there is actually a bill up at the state that would eradicate that from the permitting process because there is, uh, sort of the sentiment that the Design Review Board slowed that process down. Um, and, um, we had, um, we heard a little anecdote about how it actually can complement the permitting process. Uh, and I think, um, you know, for us, sort of balancing the historic nature of our community and, uh, you know, having contemporary design is very important for us to have that. So I personally see a purpose. Um, and it would just be, uh, very interesting for us to sort of hear, um, how, uh, that's going for our process and just to make sure that, uh, we are, um, use, utilizing that to the best, uh, and complementing that process rather than, um, stalling it. But it seemed, um, that the report that we got was an understanding that, um, our board is, is complementing that process, but it would be good to know for sure.
Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I have a question about the, the youth council. You mentioned, uh, 25 youth, uh, will be selected as youth advisors. Is that like, is the, are, is this still in formation and they're helping to advise what the youth council looks like? Or is each year it's going to be 25 youth that we're engaging with?
That's a good question.
It's still in formation.
Okay. I was like, who's going to interview that many people?
And this is why we have consultants.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mary Selby. Um, I guess I'll pass the shame on to the two PhD level climate scientists at the Olympic Region Clean Air Agency. And, and I, and I say that in jest because this weekend I received a text from one of the council members' friends thanking me for making their solo stove legal. Um, because a lot of people in our community have been burning recreational fires illegally for a long time since this, um, this law was put into place. So I want, just for the community's, um, understanding, I want to let folks know that now inside the city limits and, and the urban growth areas of the three Olympias, Lacy and Tomater, you can burn recreational fires similar to how you could everywhere else in the county, uh, without a, a distinction. Um, and, and the thing that I'll say is when we look at greenhouse gas from wood smoke, it will be a long time before recreational fires come even close to the home heating fires that people are having with their wood stove. So I just think it's, it's important, I know it was in jest, but I think it's important that we all understand that that's the one we need to look at. So, and then, uh, I also wanted to say thank you, uh, for the reorganization of the staff report. It's really great to see the financial, and financial implications come above the decision-making options. So thank you for that. Um, I had a meeting last week for the Economic Development Council Board at Talking Cedar in South County, uh, which just kind of a, an amazing facility, uh, built by the Confederated Tribes of the Chehalis, uh, through their tribal enterprises. The first, um, as, as many of you know, the first, uh, tribal distillery in the United States. They had to change congressional law to be able to do it. That facility is the largest brewery in Washington State, if it ran at full capacity, and the largest distillery west of the Mississippi River.
Wow.
And they are working on their own brands. So, um, you know, they're selling a, one brand in the front, uh, right now, but they're working on building out their own beer and, and spirits and, uh, really some cool opportunities for community gathering and conversation, as well as some really good food. So I just wanted to say, check it out if you haven't been to Talking Cedar. And the last thing is a little bit selfish, but, uh, my daughter and all of you know her, uh, got to participate in the Green Congress that they were Green State College this week. And it's really cool. They go out and, uh, test the water quality in the Deschutes River and they come back and they sew it up and tell these stories. Well, my kid, her group told the story of water quality and then added a set of slides that none of the other groups had. And this was about, and I'm going to, not going to get it right because I'm not the scientist, um, who knows what six PPDQ is? Danny, I knew she would. So, so six PPD quinone is the, essentially the byproduct of our tires. And the kids are saying the tire crumbs that are falling off of the tires into the Puget Sound and killing the salmon, right? We all know about this. We've been talking about it more and more lately. Well, the recommendation from their group was to ask the city council, and, and I'm, I'm trying to arrange for them to do this, but I just wanted to bring this because I think it's a really good insight because even in my own mind, I go to a regulatory approach first. And the kid said, well, can't you just ask the tire companies what they're going to do about this? And so that's going to be probably what we get as a request from a, a group of fifth graders to say, ask us to reach out to the tire industry and, and, and ask for what their cutting-edge science is so that we can start to tell a story of, of hope and opportunity to our community around one of the biggest polluters that we know of. So I, I was inspired and I thought it would be a short, a story that the community would like to hear.
I love it. I love it. And, uh, do you have fifth graders on your youth council? Because Maggie should be president.
Yes.
Someday. We're still deciding the age group.
Right.
Someday. Uh, no, that's great. We'd happy, be happy to draft a letter. Uh, and I'm going to take the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nothing to report, although Councilmember Wayne, I will tell you that on my wife's side of the family, roasting the perfect mellow is a badge of honor.
Yes. I'm actually quite good at it myself. And we will not be meeting, we will not have a business meeting next week. We'll see you after that and we are adjourned.